Our lead focus, the five-day session of the Parliament will begin today at 11:00 AM. The agenda includes discussions on the evolution of India's parliamentary democracy, celebrating India at 75. Eight bills have also been listed, including a controversial one on the Chief Election Commissioner's appointment. Now, the discussion on the 75 years of the Parliament today is likely to be opened by Prime Minister Narendra Modi in the Lok Sabha and the BJP's senior leader and union minister, Mr. Piyush Goyal, in the Rajya Sabha. So that's what is planned for today. Tomorrow at 11:00 AM, there will also be an assembly of the Lok Sabha and Rajya Sabha MPs in the Central Hall for a function to commemorate the rich legacy of the Parliament of India and the resolve to make Bharat a developed nation by 2047. That's what the agenda states. Now, to help us understand what we can expect for the next five days, we have Vasudeva Venugopal and Sunil Prabhu with us. Vasudeva joining us from Vijay Chalk. And Vasudeva, it's just about three hours till the special session of the Parliament. And tell us what all is on agenda. Of course, there were so many rumours over what could be discussed, but we officially know the agenda. Take us through that. And on the other side, tell us also this bit, that this could be the Parliament session when the proceedings will be shifted from the old Parliament building to the new Parliament building. Yesterday, we saw the flag hoisting there.
Absolutely, Priyanshi, that is one thing that is surely going to happen. Because everything else is sort of tentative, even the listing of the bills that the government did, that the centre did, the eight bills that have been listed as part of a tentative agenda. So that's not an exhaustive one. So we don't know if all these bills are coming up and if anything separate from that is also coming up. Because there is a suspicion, there is a speculation that the government could be bringing up something that is really important. But remember, one thing that we know for sure is that tomorrow, on the occasion of Ganesh Shaturthi, on the second day of the special session, we make a shift to the new Parliament. Remember, the new Parliament was ready in May, the Prime Minister had inaugurated it. But of course, the monsoon session was held in the old Parliament because it was still getting ready. And now, tomorrow, what we understand is in the first half, there's also going to be a Bidai Samaro of sorts, like a small ritual that will take place in Central Hall. And after that, the second half, the second half of the business will take place in the new Parliament. And the new Parliament is all set to receive the legislators. So that is going to be of importance and also of significance. It's going to be the first set of business that will happen in the new Parliament. Because we know this government and it attaches a lot of symbolic value to things that, you know, happen first. And the new Parliament is also a symbol of Prime Minister Narendra Modi's form of governance that includes decolonisation as an important part of it. So this is a very symbolic move, but it is also an important part of the Modi governance. What other things that we can expect in this five session that starts from a few hours from now? Is of course, starting with a discussion on the 75 years of India being a parliamentary democracy. Remember that this month, this year also marks the end of Azadika Amrit Mohatsaf. And the Prime Minister has given a call for a vision of 25 more years of, you know, a democratic India, you know, to increase its democratic ideals, to take the country among the first three economies of the world. So there's going to be a lot of discussion on history and the lessons that India has learnt from being 75 years of being a republic. Remember that 74th year of India being a republic starts from next year. So that is also going to be another celebration. So that is what will happen today. After that, tomorrow is shifting. And then we do have eight bills listed. But in the all-party meeting that happened yesterday, you know, the government has clarified that at an appropriate time, the Women's Reservation Bill will be brought in. A lot of parties have made a pitch for it, including the neutral ones like YSR CP and BJD. We also saw the Vice President, Jyoti Thakkar and President, Ropati Murmu also talk about it. So there's a lot of speculation as to what specific bills could come up. And you know, from one nation, one poll, now the committee has been formed. So of course, that will take some time. Then of course, there is this whole thing about India being changed to Bharat. That is also another, you know, speculation that is sort of being, you know, that's been around. So we don't know what are the specific, you know, bills that the government has up its sleeves. We know for sure that the shifting is going to happen tomorrow. But what we look forward to is an exciting one week of a special session. Because special sessions are few and far in between, and this is one of the special occasions. And of course, too many reasons to celebrate with the G20 presidency getting over and also recording a diplomatic victory for the country and also the Chandrayaan success. So these things will also be recognised, acknowledged as big successes of the country.
Of course, as Vasudeva categorically mentioned, one thing is clear that the proceedings are going to shift from the old Parliament building to the new one. Other than that, on the bills front, a lot is left to unpredictability. Vasudeva, thanks very much for joining us. We also have Sunil Prabhu. And Sunil, as you heard, Vasudeva also pointed out that there's still, that's left, there's still a lot that could be left to surprise. We could see some surprises because there's so much that has gone around on the speculations on what could come up in the special session. And the opposition has been calling it a diversionary tactic. And even Sonia Gandhi wrote a letter listing nine issues, including the Manipur violence, that should be discussed. So the opposition will keep on raising those issues or what is the opposition's strategy amid this element of surprise?
Well, I, you know, Priyanshi, don't want to get into what is really now called speculation. Because I think speculation must be kept aside. What are the facts? The fact is that today, when Parliament starts, the Prime Minister will start the discussion for 75 years in the Lok Sabha. The leader of the House in the Rajya Sabha, Mr. Piyush Goyal, will also do that simultaneously. And they'll have a discussion about 75 years of India's democracy and the road ahead, as the Prime Minister has been talking about 2047. What I think we need to make a correction in our headline, the government has made it clear that so far, it has not, and I repeat, it has not listed the Chief Election Appointments Bill. Yesterday, they made that categorical after many people made this. The all-parties had raised their objection to the bill. It has not listed it among those eight bills that have been present. The second and most important is that, as you rightly pointed out, it is a symbolic gesture from the old building to the new building where they'll have that, you know, customily, which is a tradition that has happened of having a joint photograph with Lok Sabha and Rajya Sabha members. And they've called for a meeting in the Central Hall, keeping an appropriate place for the leader of opposition of the Rajya Sabha. And from there, they'll walk in a march to the new building on the 19th, that is tomorrow. 20th onwards will be the proper legislative business that will start in the new Parliament House. So it's in that context that we'll have to wait and watch and see how things play out. It is definitely, you know, interesting times whether the government definitely comes up with a surprise. As of now, the mood of course is for continuing with the special session to talk about how things have progressed in the last few years. And of course, to capitalise on the G20 and various other issues. The opposition will continue to raise people's issues as they have said of what are for them a most important, unemployment, price rise, the Women's Reservation Bill, which has, you know, got a broad consensus. But of course, there are really huge concerns within the government about going ahead with it. Because that will really basically mean the end for many legislatures within Parliament. Because you'll have to, you know, give space for that and the list can continue. So it's in that backdrop that they will continue, the opposition, to raise people's issues on the floor of the House.
Very important clarification also there that the CEC bill, the controversial CEC bill, is not going to come up as Sunil Prabhu just mentioned. Thanks very much for joining us this morning and really decoding what we can expect over the next five days of the special session of the Parliament. One thing for sure, as I mentioned, that the proceedings of the Parliament will see a symbolic transfer from the old building to the new building. But in terms of what all will be discussed and what all could be decided at the end of it, that is left to some element of surprise. We'll keep you getting the latest from the Parliament as in when the Parliament session begins. It will begin at 11:00 AM today and tomorrow, the proceedings will shift to the new Parliament building. Now, my colleague Vasudeva Venugopal also explains to us what the official agenda has been listed as and what are the bills that are likely to come up, listen. Right after the remarkable diplomatic victory that India scored in its G20 presidency last week by bringing in the Delhi leaders' declaration with 100% consensus, now all attention is on the special session of the Parliament, which will be held for five days, starting from Monday. The Parliamentary Bulletin has revealed that on the first day of the session, the two Houses will hold a discussion on the Parliament's 75-year-old journey, starting from the Constituent Assembly that first met in 1946. Remember that Azadika Amrit Mohatsaf ends this year. That was a celebration of 75 years of India's independence. Now, the centre is looking at kick-starting the celebrations of 75 years of India being a republic. There are also other reasons to celebrate. Success of India's Chandrayaan III, apart from the G20 outcomes. And there will also be a shift to the new Parliament. The first business that gets done in the new Parliament is expected to be of symbolic significance. And it is also likely to happen around Ganesh Shaturthi, seen as an auspicious occasion to start something new. Among the important bills that are likely to be taken up is the Critical Chief Election Commissioner and other election commissioners' bill, which was introduced in the Rajya Sabha on the last day of the monsoon session. This bill proposes to revise the salary and service conditions of the CEC and the two election commissioners, aligning them with those of a cabinet secretary as opposed to that of a Supreme Court judge. Opposition has flagged concerns with the bill, saying that this is an attempt to undermine the authority of the election commissioners and can have implications on the way the poll body works. We will also have the Post Office Bill 2023 that looks to consolidate and amend the law relating to post officers in India to make them suited to modern times. There is also the Press and Registration of Periodicals Bill 2023 that was introduced by IMD Minister Anurag Thakur in the Rajya Sabha in the monsoon session. In the 1867 Act, only the district magistrate, the DM, could cancel the declaration of a periodical. But the new bill empowers the Press Registry General or the PRG to suspend or cancel the registration. It also says that a person who has been convicted by any court for an offence involving terrorist act or the security of the state shall not be permitted to bring out a periodical. It also waters down criminal provisions. Now, the Editors Guild of India has expressed concerns over some portions of the bill and has urged the Lok Sabha speaker to refer it to a select committee. Of course, these bills have been announced officially, but sources are telling us that there could be other important bills, politically significant ones, that could also be introduced. Additionally, an all-party meeting will also be held on Sunday, one day ahead of the special session. Also, the same day, the PM will launch the Mega Vishvakarma Yochna to benefit skilled artisans and workers of traditional occupations from OBC communities. Now, moving on to the big story from Jammu and Kashmir. The anti-terror operation in the Anantnag district has now been going on for the last over 140 hours. Now, there's a jungle warfare that the armed forces are involved in. This after the same anti-terror operation, the encounter, killed three security personnel on Wednesday. Now, what we can tell you now is that there's no firing since last evening during the ongoing anti-terror operations at the Gadol Forest in Jammu and Kashmir's Anantnag. My colleague Nazir Masoodi joining us for more details on this. And Nazir, it's been six days, more than 140 hours of this anti-terror operation, this encounter, and it's still underway. Tell us, what do we know, whether any progress has been made? One significant development is that there's been no firing since last evening.
Yeah, exactly. In fact, after heavy shelling for all these high days, there was fire, fire erupted at what is believed to be the suspected militant hideout in the dense forest. So the trees were on fire. So we don't know whether any militant has been killed in that blaze or they were there in the same cave which actually was the area which had caught fire. Because all these days, that particular spot was the main target of the security forces. Massive mortar shelling, rockets and other exercises were dropped there. So the same spot caught fire last evening. There were reports, some reports, media reports, that one body, charged body has been recovered. But no such information has been shared by the security force either by army or Jammu and Kashmir police. So this operation has been going on, but since yesterday, really no firing was heard. And there was also heavy rains yesterday afternoon, which hampered the operation. So this is going on for last now six days without any substantial, you know, breakthrough in the sense that police were seeing three Lashka militants were holed up. But so far, there's no information, if they have been killed. But this operation is underway, firing has stopped since yesterday.
Nazir Masoodi, thanks very much for joining us this morning. So as Nazir pointed out, the rescue, the anti-terror operation, the encounter is still underway as well for more than 140 hours, but there has been no firing since last evening. It's time for a short break now. But on the other side, we'll tell you how Gujarat is facing flood-like situations in several low-lying areas after extremely heavy rainfall. We'll tell you what's behind this and what are the impacts. Welcome back. Let's take you to Gujarat now, where there's a flood-like situation in several parts. Several people are stranded in low-lying areas such as Bharauch and the NDRF is carrying out rescue operations. As you can see in those visuals, several cars have also been swept away in the floodwater in several low-lying areas such as Bharauch. Now, the NDRF, as I mentioned, is carrying out rescue operations, as you can see in those visuals. And close to 200 people have been rescued till now, while thousands have been evacuated and many are still stranded. But what's really causing this? Well, extremely heavy rainfall over the last few days coupled with the release of water from major dams such as the Sadarsarover Dam, the Okai and the Kadana Dam have battered several parts of Gujarat. Now, mainly the impact is seen in south and central parts of this state. As you can see, that's the Okai Dam, from where water has been released, the gates have been opened. And that's also adding to this. Now, till now, close to 10,000 people have been evacuated in nearly five districts, while hundreds of people have been rescued, while many are stranded. But the IMD has issued a red alert for several districts, including Dahor, Aravali, Mahisagar. And there's more heavy rainfall predicted for these areas. And the Met Department has warned of isolated heavy to very heavy rainfall in several parts of Gujarat till Thursday morning. So the situation is not getting better as of now. It's time for a short break now. But on the other side, we'll tell you what the Congress party's guarantees for the Telangana elections are, stay tuned. Welcome back. Let's turn our attention to the big political story of the day. Political activity in Telangana on Sunday was at such a high pitch that it would seem the countdown to state elections has started even before the announcement of the election dates. That with Home Minister Amitabh, the Chief Minister KCR and the Congress leader Sonia Gandhi all making their respective pitches to the people of the state. While the BJP celebrated the Telangana Liberation Day, the ruling BRs called it the Telangana Integration Day. While on the other side, the Congress on the same day announced six poll guarantees after its working committees meeting. Take a look at our report.
The BJP's Telangana Liberation Day was the BRs' Telangana Integration Day and the MIM's Unity Day. September 17, the date on which Nizam's Hyderabad acceded to the Indian Union in 1948, took on different political avatars to stake claim for who should get credited for Telangana and who should rule Telangana.
The BJP would like to give the credit for the formation of Telangana
The BJP would like to give the credit for the formation of Telangana to Saradar Valabhai Patel, who had ordered the police action at the request of Hyderabad Nizam. KCR would say that it is his party that has got Telangana and its development. While Congress is saying that it is because of Sonia Gandhi that Telangana was formed.
This even as the Congress held a massive public meeting in Tukuguda soon after the first meeting of the newly constituted Congress Working Committee in Hyderabad, where Sonia Gandhi announced six poll promises to the people of Telangana that would be fulfilled within one month if the Congress is elected to power.
To fulfil the aspirations of the people of Telangana, of my brothers and sisters of Telangana, we are announcing six guarantees, Mahalaxpi being the first one. And we are committed to fulfil, to fulfil in them, each, to fulfil each one of them. It has been my dream to see the Congress government in Telangana that will work for all sections of our society.
For both the BJP as well as the BRs, the Congress would be enemy number one. Because it could be the Congress that could stand between KCR and a third term in office as Chief Minister. And for the BJP, they would not want another state to go to the Congress ahead of the elections in 2024. In Hyderabad, with camera person Nagraj Umar Sudhir, NDTV.
Moving on, the iPhone fever is real and how? Apple has unveiled its, the next generation of its immensely popular iPhone at the recent Wanda Last event earlier this week. And the pre-orders for the iPhone 15 series commenced in numerous countries on September 15. Now, interestingly, within less than an hour of the pre-order launch, the iPhone 15 Pro Max has been entirely sold out with the majority of colour and configuration choices now indicating a two-to-three-week waiting period. My colleague Vidant has more details.
Well, Apple's latest iPhone 15 is really selling like hotcakes, there's a mad rush in pre-orders. In fact, iPhone 15 Pro Max got sold out in less than an hour during pre-orders. In fact, the Pro Max model got sold out in less than an hour in various countries. And it got sold out after pre-sale actually began across countries on September 15. As per a report, after this mad rush, there's a five-week waiting period for some Pro Max models. In India, there's an eight-week wait time for some models, some variants of iPhone 15 Pro Max. What reports now seem to suggest is that customers can now buy iPhone 15 when general sales actually start, they begin from September 22. In fact, the rush was so crazy that the Apple site nearly crashed just minutes before the 15 series launch began, the pre-orders actually began. The 15 series frenzy is actually real. In fact, it's also caused delay in deliveries globally. So not just, you know, is there a mad rush as far as pre-orders are concerned? But there's a massive delay after you've placed your order as well. There's a five-week delay on an average for iPhone 15 Pro Max globally. There's an eight-week delay in India, seven-week delay in China. In fact, China actually accounts for over 30% of the pre-orders. The pre-orders amount to a whopping $27.5 million just from China. There's also a seven-week delivery delay in the UK and a six-week delay in Canada. So amid this rush, amid these delays, how to actually book or pre-order your iPhone 15 online? Well, the first step, log on to the Apple's official website. Step two, select your model, your storage option and your colour variant. The third step is to select the trade-in option. If you wish to exchange your old device, you can skip it if you like. The fourth step is to select Apple Care for coverage option. Again, you can skip it if you like. And the final step is to select continue to go to the payment option. Whether iPhone 15 is worth it after iPhone 14, well, experts are divided.
Now, moving on to the big story that has created outrage, not just in India, but in the United States as well. There's increasing outrage after the video of a US cop laughing while discussing the death of an Indian student in Seattle's surface last week. Now, the South Asian immigrant group met the Seattle mayor about this. And the Seattle Police Chief has also responded, saying they will ensure the insensitive remarks will never be repeated, while the Seattle mayor has apologised on behalf of the whole city. Take a look at our report. Outrage, anger, and disappointment. As the residents of Seattle gather to protest the deaths of Indian student Janvi Kandila.
We took the scraps and went home. It will not happen that way, but it's a start.
It's been months since Kandila was accidentally moved down by Seattle cop Daniel Ordor.
Then when he hit the brakes, flew off the car.
But the viral video of the policeman's body cam footage has ignited the fury and resentment of the members of the South Asian community, who demand accountability.
It's like a culture issue. $11,000, she was 26 anyway, she had limited value. Get it off your mind.
Yes.
Okay? But we don't want to be another movement where we scream and yell and destroy things and then nothing happens.
The Vice President of the Police Union, if you don't know what the Police Union is, it's the people that are supposed to hold bad cops accountable. And he's the Vice President. So if he's the Vice President of the Union that's supposed to hold cops accountable, that's why nothing happens to bad cops.
Leaders representing the South Asian community met with Seattle's Mayor Bruce Harrell in a closed-door meeting to discuss the steps forward, with both the mayor and the chief of the police department expressing their condolences.
On behalf of the city of Seattle, we want to express our extreme condolences for your loss and making sure that our apologies as city officials are felt to your community and your family. So my condolences for your loss.
I know that I've talked to the brother and some of the other family. But we're here to continue to listen because we're here, we want to stand with you. We want to figure out ways that you also heal from the situation. We also want to figure out also that we had these insensitive comments and we want to work to ensure that that never, ever occurs, that we value our human life, that we do not dehumanise others.
But until now, there is no assurance on the legal action that is yet to be taken against the police officer who laughed off Kandila's death. The Police Officers Guild has brushed off any racial angle, maintaining that Ordor did not know who the victim was and that his remarks were taken out of context, which has angered protesters further, all of whom want accountability.
I think people do feel jaded about seeing officers held accountable within the department. I hope that changes, you know, and the city is watching. And we are expecting there to be changes and to be accountability.
And the incident has shaken the faith of other Indian students, any of whom could have suffered Janvi's fate.
I came just like her, on student visa, that young, and I walked to work, it could have been me.
The tragic incident has garnered criticism from within the US as well as the international community, with all eyes on what the Seattle administration will do next. Nainthara Singh for NDTV. Let's get you the big international stories now. According to reports, a bus crash in the Limpopo province of South Africa has claimed at least 20 lives. The bus had been shuttling stuff from the Venetia Diamond Mine when it crashed in the north of the country. Now, details surrounding the cause of the collision are not known yet. Now, four members of a Greek rescue team that was on their way to the flood-ravaged city of Jharna and three members of a Libyan family were killed in a road accident. Fifteen of the Greek rescue team, fifteen of the Greek rescue team members were injured, including seven who are in a critical condition. According to reports, a bus carrying medical personnel collided with a vehicle moving in the opposite direction. Now, to the Russia-Ukraine war, Ukrainian forces have said that they have captured the village of Klishchivka from Russian troops after months of fierce fighting. Now, the village is south of Russian-occupied Bahmut and comes days after the Ukrainian forces said that they liberated the nearby village of Andrivka. A North Korean leader, Kim Jong-un, is on his way home Sunday from Russia, ending a six-day trip that triggered global concerns about weapons transfer deals between the two countries locked in separate standoffs with the West. Foreign officials and experts have said that North Korea could provide badly needed munitions for Moscow's war on Ukraine in exchange for sophisticated Russian weapons technology that would advance Kim's nuclear ambitions. The Kremlin had said on Friday that Russia and North Korea had not signed any agreements on military matters. And it's just the morning, but we are already craving street food. Thanks to the Japanese ambassador to India, Delhi's street food now has a new fan. Recently, the Japanese ambassador to India paid a visit to one of Delhi's renowned destinations for street food, Sarojini Nagar. Now, the Japanese ambassador shared the video of his visit on the microblogging platform X with a caption that reads, "Wonderful Desi experience with Hindi-speaking Japanese YouTuber." And he quoted what he told the Alu Tikki stall, Alu Tikki DJ. And after relishing Delhi's street food, he said, "Now I am an Indian." Take a look.
Alu Tikki DJ.
完璧です。バリアです。バリア。
通じた。
通じましたね。
はい。玉ねぎ。はい。じゃあ行きますよ。
お願いします。
Very good. Very good.
おー、すごい似合いますね。
Yeah.
We leave you with that food for thought, quite literally. Coming up on the other side, highlights of the India versus Sri Lanka Asia Cup final match that India, of course, wins.